Welcome to the March 14th meeting of the San Carlos City Council Redevelopment Agency. Tonight, we have the pleasure of the Troop 153, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll just hang on one second, guys. We'd just like to report from closed session that council did meet in closed session. We took no action. We gave advice to staff. Okay, Troop, if you would like to come forward and lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
Color guards, advance. Color guards, salute. Can you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to item number two. Changes to the order of the agenda? Do we have any changes from staff?
No, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Any council members? No? You're supposed to do that from the public? No. Bob, you have a change?
Yes, just a clarification on consent calendar denial of claim at 60. When you deny the claim, it's denied, number one, on the basis that it's a late claim. It's denied on the record.
Thank you. Okay, without any changes to the order of the agenda, we'll move on to council reports. Update on hot harvest nights, farmer's market. I don't know if we have anybody here to report on that. That was going to be the mayor, or we do? Okay, very well, we'll step forward.
I'm happy to report that the hot harvest nights will begin May 5th. That's Thursday, May 5th, and it will run through September 15th this year. We're starting a month earlier so that you can take advantage of all the good spring produce, and we will finish a little bit earlier than we did last year so that we don't run into those dark nights. Any other questions about it?
Will it be in the same location?
Yes.
Generally?
700 block. Correct.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Cheryl. Item B, report on South County Fire Authority negotiations. Council members King and Eaton.
At the last fire board meeting, which was last week, last Wednesday, the fire chief reported to us that he has had discussions with the Redwood City Fire Department, with the City of San Mateo, also with the Menlo Fire Protection District, and they had a meeting also with the county plan. They got bumped, but they are also working on that. Those meetings are generally fruitful. There is interest, but there is nothing more specific to report other than there is distinct progress that we're making, and we're optimistic that something can be worked out. Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
Chuck Loudon, Fire Chief, South County Fire. I really have nothing to add. The discussions are at the point where each one of the interested agencies that we're dealing with will be coming back to us with some broad and general proposals, how they would see a merger with South County Fire, contract for service with South County Fire slash City of San Carlos slash Belmont Fire Protection District, what those would look like, and what their preferences are. So, again, I think it's been positive to this point, and we have good, positive discussions with potential partners. Have an answer, any questions?
One question, Chief. In terms of time, how do you see that working out? You told us at one other report about a year.
No, I'm still, maybe I'm eternally optimistic, but I'm looking to narrow this down to one or two primary potential partners or contract providers this summer, with a target date of January of '06 for implementation of an operational department.
Chief, for the record, that question was asked at the fire board meeting for the public, and same answer. However, you might want to embellish a little bit that it might take the form of a contract first, and then there are some other issues with respect to ironing out a possible fire protection district. It might take two to three years. There's issues of going to LAFCO. Could you just expand a little bit?
What one of the scenarios?
When we say get an answer, we don't mean to solve the whole problem, you know, in the first day, sorry, in the first year, but a path on a, on yet a next.
It really does depend on the partnership that San Carlos chooses to follow. The example I used in response to the question at the fire board meeting was with Menlo Park Fire Protection District. Their preference would be to expand the Menlo Park Fire Protection District to provide protection to both Belmont and San Carlos at this stage, recognizing that that may not be a quick and easy thing to occur. LAFCO would have to be involved. There would be a, basically, an annexation vote that would occur from the citizenry of each area to be protected. The short term, if the council chose to go forward with that kind of an approach, the short term would involve a contract for service, so that that agency would provide services to the city for a specific dollar cost, with the intent, long term, to move ahead with whatever legislative process would occur to accomplish the end result. But again, this is really preliminary. It may not be the course of action. Menlo Park is interested in providing service strictly on a contract as well.
So if I can just summarize what you're saying, then, is we may have an interim plan that may last for a year or two until we make a final plan that would be something that would have longer life to it?
Certainly. We have a deadline. Both the Belmont Fire Protection District Board, as well as the City of San Carlos City Council, voted to end the current joint powers agreement effective June 30th of 2006. So, without some kind of an agreement from both parties to modify that, we do have a timeline that we have to meet, and there are a variety of alternatives to meet that timeline.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Tom? Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
We're still on council reports. If we have any other reports from council members? Done?
I'd like to report that I have had continual contact with PG&E with regard to the undergrounding of utilities on Industrial Road. I got a phone call yesterday from Alan Fisher, who's the superintendent of that project, and he tells me that work is ongoing now. They're pulling cables. We expect that that, well, that about 95% of the work will be done by, let's say, the end of July or so, and that 100% of the work is expected to be completed by the end of September, which is reasonable, given all the things that they have to do to do that. So, they are working on it, and it should be complete.
Very good. Thank you. Don, do you have anything about the meeting with the homeowners association?
Oh, yeah. I met with the L'Oreal Homeowners Association also last week, and had a good meeting. We discussed, and Matt has met with them previously and also brought this topic up, but we talked about the topic of garage conversions and how that needs to work, both in that neighborhood as well as citywide, that we can't make special ordinances for, just for certain neighborhoods, how all that would play out, what are the implications. It was a good, solid meeting, had a good discussion. So, we'll see where we go from there.
Thank you. Mike?
Just quickly, at the meeting Thursday of CCG, CCG awarded San Carlos the final payment of $50,000 for SCOOP. So, Parvise, they did make the final payment.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. And Tom?
A couple of items. Yesterday, the mayor and I had the pleasure of presenting a proclamation to the congregation of Trinity Presbyterian Church for their 50-year anniversary. That was a wonderful experience. The congregation was well gathered and appreciative of the recognition. The second item is that tomorrow, we're meeting again on the Parks for the Future. This is our third, fourth, fifth meeting to talk about funding parks in the county and how the money would be allocated. So, we'll keep you posted on that. And then finally, regarding the Sister City program, we have decided that four of us from the committee will journey to San Carlos, Nicaragua, to determine whether there is a potential forest-sister-city relationship with that small village in Nicaragua. We'll be leaving on April 17, come back on April 21, and we'll have a full report when that happens.
And I don't have anything to report, but I would like to press on staff, if possible, if Mike might help me out here. I was supposed to be at a JPA meeting with the library and was not able to make it, and unfortunately, I didn't call Tom and ask him to attend. So, I know there was an issue that was, had some significance to San Carlos. If Mike, you know anything about that, would like to report on that, I would appreciate it.
Yes, Vice Mayor Grokot, the library board continue? Question about the library's position.
Good. Thank you. That concludes council reports. Item four is presentations, and that's a presentation of a proclamation to Marina Gatto, and I think I'm going to leave that for Inga, Mayor Inga Tico-Doorty, to take care of when she is here. And I don't believe Marina is even here. Right. So, and I think the mayor has already talked to her about that. Is that right? Yeah. So, we're just going to move on from presentations. To, next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is for items which are not on the posted agenda, and the maximum time for that is 10 minutes. So, if we have any members of the public who would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, approval of the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless anyone from the public, staff, or council would like to pull a particular item for discussion. Would anybody like to pull any of the items? Okay.
Good move for approval of consent calendar items. Six A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Second. And I think, council, Mr. Lanzoni, you want us to note the late claim for item?
C.
Six C for the record. Right. So, you want to prove it for?
Well, with the city attorney's comments noted, as he previously expressed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davids?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Tico-Doorty is absent.
Okay, moving along. We might, we might have a record here going. Item seven, unfinished business. 7A is Industrial Road Assessment District project. We have two items under item A. 8I is accepting the financial report, final financial report, and 2 is resolution approving amended engineer's report. Richard?
Richard Avery, Finance Director. The report details the expenditures for the Industrial Road project as completed. They're just under $4.9 million, or approximately $198,000 under the approved budget, and I might note that this is substantially below the original budget of $5.9 million, and the reduction was primarily in the construction estimate, and at the time, we were getting very competitive bids, and that helped the project budget, as well as allow the council to extend the project north of its original terminus to add on approximately $580,000 in additional costs. We still came in under budget by almost $200,000. Are there any questions?
So, Richard, the recommendation to allocate this to the Redwood Shores Parkway project will basically put in that amount plus the additional needed to match the 250,000?
What we're asking for tonight is to allocate the savings, the $198,000, to that project, and we'll come back and identify additional needs. We are not at the point of providing a final estimate on that project, but wanted to have, start putting the funding in place so that the council could make a decision at a later date.
Okay. Are we fairly close to the total required, do you think, or parvi's, perhaps?
Yes, we have done, the consultants have prepared the preliminary design, and I have asked them to provide a cost estimate of the project, and we should be able to bring the cost estimate and conceptual plan to the council within, I would say, no more than four weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a question, a clarification, Richard. This $198,000 net savings, even after the extension, that's a savings on contract price. It's not reflected in any of the allocations of how we got to the payment of the total amount that we ended up paying. Is that right?
I'm not sure I'm following.
In other words, if the city slash redevelopment agency paid 30%, and the other was 70%, that was a fixed amount of percentages, and it's still a net savings of $198,000, right?
It's $198,000 savings to the redevelopment agency.
To the redevelopment.
Right.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
And that's why we're requesting that that funding be reallocated. We wouldn't propose funding be reallocated from the Assessment District. That's in a follow-up report.
Okay.
You cannot.
I'm sorry?
You cannot.
Correct.
And that's the reason I asked the question the way it is, is because I wanted you to tell me that. So, thank you.
I would.
I've got some questions and things I wanted to ask. The first one I'm going to ask is typically, we get advice from our commissions and so forth, and it's, this is talking about an either-or situation with the RDA, and so I'm wondering about, actually, I'm going to strike that question. I'm thinking here who that would be, and that's not applicable. Yeah, well, I'm also thinking of EDAC, or Economic, yeah, and they're not involved. So, I'm going to strike the question. The next question I wanted to ask, though, is on this report, you know, we're asked to review and accept the budget performance information and final status report, and so I have a question about the third line item down, which is construction engineering, support services, and miscellaneous. What was the original budget amount on that?
Well, the original budget didn't, we didn't break it down by the components. That was done at a later date for the council, just to give the council a sense of what staff thought the various components would end up to cost. Parvise, do you know the original, do you recall the original estimate for that component? I can tell you that the construction undergrounding was our place where we, once we revised the budget, and then the Public Works Director provided an estimate based on these four categories, excluding the street lighting. The construction cost and those costs associated with removal of contaminated soil was our biggest cost overage, costing a little over $160,000. If not for that expense, we would have had even more savings, but we did plan on some additional costs, and that's why we were still able to come in under budget.
Well, if I remember correctly, when we did see estimates early on with this project, there were actually only three categories, and this construction engineering and construction management was one category, and it was estimated at about 10%, which is typical of construction costs.
I believe there are all four categories. The additional funding for the street lighting is one we added for this report, just because that expense has not been born yet, and we're estimating that for, to close everything out. But there were four categories, and we had construction management all along as a separate category because we thought that that, given the council's attention to that issue, that 10% was kind of an industry standard we were looking at. But the 170 was substantially below that cost, even though the project was extended in terms of its scope. But the $170,000 estimate was still, we still came in under that by almost 10,000.
Well, I'm going back to prior to even doing the, when we were talking about the Assessment District, so very, very early on in this project, we had this construction engineering support and construction management lumped together as one. And then later, when you started giving us ongoing reports, they were split, and the construction management was listed as 170, and construction engineering support services was listed as 170 as well. So, it seems that, you know, this one item, the thing I'm concerned about, Richard, is that we've got all these other areas in this project that are markedly under budget, and then we have this one item that is 193% over budget.
Well, if you add the two together, the final cost for the two, you come up with 480, 488, which is pretty close to 10% of the budget.
Who's the vendor on construction engineering support services?
There's a lot of items included in that. BKF engineers during construction, soil contamination, we had to redesign because of utility conflicts. We had to redesign the trenches. We had to redesign the storm grain system, and contaminated soil brought environmental consultants to test the soil and take it to laboratory and analyze it and tell us what it is, where it has to go, whether it can go to landfill or not. The other part of the services and miscellaneous is.
Excuse me? I didn't hear you there.
As I said, there are other parts of the construction management support. For example, there was a, during construction, we had to do additional surveying because we found out that the proposed center line of the street will not work based on the new top-up curb elevations, required additional surveying. So, there are a lot of components involved in that. And initially, when you prepared the budget, we never come up with a number. You come up with a number of estimated construction, and the rest of it is lump sum, basically, if you will, based on the percentage. We'll see another 30% for construction management, engineering support, and things like that.
Well, I've asked, I met with the city attorney on February 23rd. Actually, I want to go back. I asked the same question on April 26, 2004, when one of these interim reports was given on this project, the financial report. And at that time, that item was 144% over budget, which is why I asked then, who are the vendors? And I've got about the same kind of answer I'm getting now, which is little of this guy, little of that guy, but nothing clarified. And for an item that's that much over budget and is now 193% over budget, I'm sorry, but I would like to know who the vendors are and where the money went and who got paid.
First of all, is that over budget? Everything is, the total project is under budget. If you're saying that number is over some estimate that we estimated, that's true, and all the vendors who received this are all listed separately in the finance department. And finance department can give you a list of all the vendors that were involved in that number.
Now, I asked the city attorney, like I was starting to say, I asked the question on April 26, who the vendors are, got a similar answer to what I'm getting now, and then on February 23, I met with the city attorney, just this last February, and asked, on this item, construction engineering and support services, who has the contract on that? You're telling me there's more than one, but I asked, who has the contract on it, not knowing if it was one or many, and I still haven't gotten an answer on it.
The answer hasn't changed. The BKF engineers, green environment, BKF engineers for surveying, then all of that is there. The answers are not changing, but I can't remember all of them who have been involved, but all of it is detailed, who got paid, and who the contractor's were.
Okay. Now, for the rest of the council and staff, the reason I'm drilling into this is because I want to know, myself, as a council member who approved this project, we're saying this thing came in under budget, and that's all well and good. That's fine. That's great. But, for instance, and I'm not saying this is what happened, but for instance, if we had a project and it was under budget, but we couldn't somehow account for $158,000, which is how much we're over here, and I know you're saying we're not over, but I'm saying we're over. If we couldn't account for that $158,000, we wouldn't sit here and just say, well, that's okay, we were under budget, the fact that we don't know where the $158,000 went, that's okay. We wouldn't do that. And so, that's why I'm asking, if we've got an item that's over budget, it looks to me like it's over budget. I know you're saying it's not, but if we had an item that was over budget like this, it sticks out like a sore thumb. I simply want to know, where did the money go, and who was it spent on? Who were the vendors? Where are the contracts? And if I can make one more point on that, is if we have contracts, contracts state usually, contracts normally state, here's an amount that you will do the work for, and if you run into trouble, or if there needs to be a change order, here's the process you go through for the change order, including, in some instances, if it's under a certain amount, it's fine, it can be approved by staff. If it's over a certain amount, it has to come back to council. I haven't seen any of that. So, that's why I'm drilling down. I would like to know the answer to these questions.
Vice Mayor Grokot, that information was provided to you approximately a year ago when you did your reconciliation of the, of all the expenditures that you were pulling from the warrant list, which is approved by council at every meeting, and then finance came back with its own reconciliation corrections. Some of those expenses were higher, some were lower, but basically, our reconciliation of the two spreadsheets, we listed all of the vendors on that spreadsheet. All the vendors are always listed on the warrant list, so it's not something that we've been trying to hide from you. It's been there all along. We have also, we've acknowledged the expenditures we had for green environment, which was primarily soil contamination, BKF for the extension of the project, the extra work that was done, as the Public Works Director just pointed out, for the center line. So, those costs have been very available, but if you would like for us to go back and pull all the expenditures for this one category, we'd be glad to do that.
I'm going to comment on what you said about the reconciliation. You're right, I did do a report, and it caused staff to react and put together a report, and as you said, there were some areas that were a little different than what I had. But at that time, I don't think we were 193% over budget on this item. And so, yes, I would like to have a breakdown on this number, where the money went, who it went to, what are the contracts, and how was it approved?
Matt, did you receive this list already?
What list?
Richard just said that he provided you.
We all did back.
Right, in April.
No, no. Mike, this was when the.
What's the date of the?
I believe that was back in the spring of last year, and then in December, we also had the last regular report on the financial status, and even in that report, this category was over, and for the identified reasons. So, we did not know that there was a question tonight to go back and drill down on that particular component, but we'd be glad to provide that information.
I would, I would like to postpone this item for acceptance until we get those items, and it shouldn't be too difficult to do if you've already got it from spring or whatever. I don't see that it would be that much more work.
Richard, how much more work could it be?
We've got all, got all the spreadsheets, just sorting it out. It's not, not too great of a task.
You can do that by when? Next meeting?
We could have it back next meeting.
Thank you. We'll postpone that item and put it on the agenda for the next meeting then. Thank you. Moving on to item 7A, 2.
So, Vice Mayor, members of the council.
So Vice Mayor, members of the council, the process of formation of Assessment District, when plans are prepared, the assessment is calculated based on engineer's estimate. And this is, this shows the initial engineer's estimate for the construction of everything that was eligible for assessment, basically everything in the sidewalks, sidewalks and trees and irrigation system and all of that, as you can see on the bottom table, is listed. And so the engineer's estimate total at the point was 1.4 million of construction. As you can see, there are other components added to it. And at the end, based on the availability of the federal grants and the total project cost, we estimated that 711,000 of federal grants should be allocated to this portion of the project. And so, and the balance of that, based on the city council's policy on downtown, 30% of it should be paid by redevelopment agency, and the balance should be paid by the property owners. So total amount of assessment came to 886,900. And we took that and divided to linear foot of the frontage and industrial road, and the amount came to $84.55 per foot. And that's how the Assessment District was approved. And the engineer's report shows this table and how we arrived at the $84.55 per foot. Following the completion of the improvements, we have to calculate the amount of assessment based on actual cost. And these numbers are based on actual cost. Again, the line items are, the definition of line, they're all the same, but the bottom line is, the total assessment should be $303,008.60, again, based on redevelopment agency paying 30%. And when you take this, 303,000 and some change, divided by total linear foot on the industrial road, the assessment comes to $28.99 per foot. So in order to complete this Assessment District, there's a resolution in front of you. By adopting this resolution, the engineer's report will be amended, and this table will replace the original table in the engineer's report and any other modifications. And that will be filed. And then later in the year, before the end of July, we will ask the city council to adopt the resolution to place these charges on the property tax bill, starting 2005, 2006. And will continue for 10 years. But again, as indicated in the engineer's report, property owners have the choice of paying all of it at once, or after two years, however they decide. But there's a 4.5% interest on unpaid balance based on what the city council approved previously. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
So basically, Parvise, we're going from $84.55 to $28.99.
Correct.
And the individual parcel assessments are shown on tables C...
Correct. There are two tables. C1 shows the total assessment, and C2 shows annual assessment, or basically the first year assessment.
Right. And then they have the option to prepay them in any amount?
Exactly. After, if you adopt this resolution tonight and approve, we immediately prepare a letter that will go to all the property owners indicating this amount and letting them know, again, that they have the option of paying it upfront or go on the property tax bill.
Parvise, has there been any correspondence with the property owners prior to...
Not official correspondence. We have a lot of phone calls, a lot of property owners have called, and that they have heard the Assessment District would be reduced. And we have indicated, yes, definitely it will be reduced, and the city council will take action.
Parvise, regarding the scope of work, is that the same as it was originally proposed?
Exactly. Yes.
How did we handle the, we moved this project north of Holly, but it didn't involve any property assessments? Is that correct?
Correct, but we did not do anything in the sidewalks, north of Holly Street.
Street only and bicycle lanes.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
I'll move resolution...
2005-23.
2005-23.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember David?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay. Parvise, stay put, because you're on deck for the next one.
Right, thank you.
I believe, item 8A, which is a report on San Carlos bicycle projects.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to give the council a little background on this. 2003, in the summer, while the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee of San Carlos was in the process of reviewing the proposed plan for the bicycle transportation plan for San Carlos, the funding became available from the state for bicycle projects. So I submitted a project to, an application to the state, requesting funding to install Class II bike lane, which is basically striping bike lanes for entire length of Alameda. And that required that the Caltrans Bicycle Division and MTC Bicycle Division had to approve our overall bicycle transportation plan. So I met with Caltrans staff, and I met with MTC staff, and reviewed the plans, and explained the plans, and both agencies approved the plan. And that started the process of reviewing our application. Meanwhile, while we were waiting for the, an answer from the state on this application, we secured $162,000 of federal money to resurface Alameda from Britain to Redwood City limit and install bike lanes as well. Then last October, October 2004, finally, I received a letter from the state that they said has approved $54,000 to install bike lanes on the entire length of Alameda. So I called the state, I said, Alameda from Britain to Redwood City, we have federal funds, and what we'd like to do, substitute Britain from Alameda to industrial instead of that section of Alameda. Verbally, at the staff level, we all, everybody has agreed, we are in process of paperwork to do that. The allocation of $54,000 required additional $12,000 to $14,000 of the city money to match. Then the funding became available from MTC through CCAC out of Article III. So I thought, we'll prepare an application, submit to CCAC to request additional funding so city doesn't have to put any money to match. And at the same time, we thought, okay, we'll install signs on the entire length of Old County Road, basically Class III, which is just signs, bike route and shared the road signs. So we requested $20,000 in the application. CCAC staff had prepared some scoring criteria, so you know, when you prepare the application, you know where, how much you're going to score. So I reviewed that, and of course, as you all know, I have a lot of experience in grant applications. For example, one of the items was support from the general public, or any support you can get. So the first place, of course, we went to BPAC, and BPAC endorsed the application. And from there, we took it to Traffic and Transportation Commission, asked them to endorse the application, and they did unanimously. Then we contacted all school principals in San Carlos, asked them to write a letter in support of our project, and they all did, without exception. Then we asked Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Wu, to write a letter, and she did. We asked Chamber of Commerce to write a letter in support of the project, and they did. And all of these, I'm just gathering the documents in support of the project. Then with the planning staff, we prepared a very simple environmental document, recorded, signed it and recorded and included in the application. And we asked our GIS coordinator to prepare a plan that shows the project and shows major public places, like schools and parks. And that plan is what you have a copy of in front of you. So we included that in the application. The other part of scoring criteria was state of readiness, how ready are we to proceed? So we even prepared the plans, and we indicated in the application that even the plans are ready, we are ready to go. So we submitted all of that, and then the day that we had to appear in front of CCAC, BPAC, to present our project, unfortunately, I could not attend, but I asked our engineering assistant, Don Gilbert, I explained the project to him, because he usually doesn't get involved in these projects, and asked him to go and present the project, and he did. And he did a good job. And our application in the county was rated number one, based on the score. And so I think that BPAC approved, and actually, I received a call, this, after the CCAC approves, it goes to MTC for review. Actually, I received a call last Thursday, that MTC has approved our project, we are ready to go. So based on all of that, I'm requesting $85,000 of gas tax, even though the entire project, we estimated $74,000, but that's based on our estimate. So we're thinking, in case the bid's coming a little higher, the money is there. With the bids coming lower, we want to use the addition of this $85,000 with approval of BPAC to install Class III on Cedar and Cordilleras. Those are the two streets that are on the priority list. So that's the purpose of requesting $85,000. By the way, I remember when Councilmember Davis was the mayor, he expressed his disappointment that we're not doing anything for bicyclists. And that's when the formation of BPAC started. I'm happy to say, at the end, by the end of this summer, all the possible Class II bike lanes in San Carlos, some Class III will be installed, and the city share of cost is less than 10% for the entire project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Before we go on to questions, I just wanted to comment, since you are here tonight, and you weren't at the last council meeting, when I was able to proudly report that our project was number one, I wanted to thank you for your work on that. And I see a member of our BPAC committee here tonight in the audience, and I also thank them for their hard work on that project. It was, it was a thrill for San Carlos to be number one. And I also wanted to just let you know, Parvise, that Don Gilbert did a very good job presenting it that evening. So now we can go forward with questions.
Well, I have no questions, Parvise, other than thanks, thanks for the work you've done on this, and I think it's a great way to leverage money, and it's a great way to get the community involved, and the results show for itself. So I appreciate everyone's involvement on this.
Thanks.
Was that a recommendation?
Yes, actually.
Is that a motion to approve?
That would be a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? I bring that up because the, we are moving money from Scoot, and no one has asked anything about that, so I wanted to give opportunity if anybody has.
But it is coming back, correct?
Coming back.
Well, I just wanted to open it up, before we move along maybe too quickly.
A lot of vote.
We're ready to vote? Okay, let's go.
Councilmember David?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay. Item 8B is a discussion of a San Carlos management code of ethics.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Before you this evening is the San Carlos Management Code of Ethics. Before we jump in and begin discussing that, I wanted to give you a brief update on the city council and appointed official code of conduct and ethics that is due back for a review before you. It's going to be coming back to you on March 28. We have put it out to all the commissions at your direction when you adopted it, to have them take a look. We received very few comments. There was a little bit of confusion on their part as to whether or not you had adopted it, or if it was still in draft form. So we sent it back out to them again and asked, gave them some additional direction, and tried to confirm that they've all had an opportunity to comment. We've still received very few comments back, but it'll be coming back to you on the 28th. In regards to the Management Code of Ethics, this goes back to last year, at the time the council was considering creating their own code of conduct and ethics. The executive management team, in their biweekly meetings, was discussing ethics at the same time as the subcommittee was hammering out your policy. The entire executive management team felt that it was appropriate and were very comfortable with the idea of creating a code of ethics for themselves. The document, the draft document you see before you, has gone through a number of revisions, was based on research done with other similar codes and information that we were able to generate during the council code of ethics development. Typically, a policy like this would be an administrative one, as it applies to the department heads. In function, it would actually be administrative, in terms of the city manager implementing the policy. But because it does cover the city attorney and the city manager who work for the city council, we wanted to bring this policy before you, for you to approve. And just a little bit about the policy for the folks in the audience who haven't seen it, and the folks at home. It starts out by saying, "We, as the executive management team of the city of San Carlos, whether employed by the city or engaged through contract, are guided by the following value statement. Ethical behavior is critical to this organization's ability to achieve its goals and objectives. The community's perception of and confidence in city executive managers is fundamental to quality government. As public servants, we are accountable for high standards of conduct." The policy itself consists of a few chapters, if you will. The general rule with respect to conflicts of interest, actions and conduct designed to build public confidence, adherence to the Political Reform Act, use of confidential information, use of city position and facilities for private gain, contracts with the city, outside employment, and the employer or contractor's responsibility to adhere to this policy. That, in a nutshell, is the policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Council, any questions?
I'm going to presume that this was also reviewed by legal counsel for consistency, for appropriateness, for, you know, how you tie it into the various political reform acts and all that sort of stuff.
That's correct. And it's also important to point out that we have a number of other administrative policies that cover conduct of employees in the city. But it, in that same fashion, has been reviewed by...
And then the other comment was, I understand this has been unanimously endorsed by all of the management committee?
Yes, it has.
Tom?
No, I don't have any specific questions. I think it covers the areas that we would expect, and I appreciate knowing that the departments, in effect, had a role in putting it together and agree with the content. So I think it's off to a good, to a good start.
Mike?
Jeff Cecili. The only comment is that it authorizes the city manager to make updated changes. Is that the only...
Yeah, that's correct. I'm sorry I left that out. And the recommendation, we're just asking for the city manager to have the authority to update the positions that would be covered by her. So if there's a title change, or a new position is created in the future or whatnot, that would be an executive management position, the city manager can add or delete a position based on a mere title change without bringing it back to the council.
Okay. I have, I do have a few questions that I wanted to ask. On page one, it, under paragraph A, as I'm scrolling down and reading who it includes, it starts with the city manager, attorney, and so forth. And then it says, "Building Official." And I'm just wondering, it's a bit of a technicality, but do we call Jack just Building Official, or Chief Building Official, or who are we... or Chief Building Official or who are we referring to?
Building official.
Building official is fine. Okay, it fits with his title. Okay. Excuse me?
We refer to him as Chief Building Official, just to make him happy.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. And then I also wanted to ask about the Assistant City Clerk, which is listed there, which is fine. No offense, Christine, but I'm wondering how Christine is covered. Currently, we have a single person in both roles, one being a, the assistant being a staff position and then the city clerk being elected. And so how is the city clerk, if we didn't have the same person in the same, in the two roles, how would, how would she be covered?
Well, if you didn't have the same person in the two roles, the Assistant City Clerk would still be included in here.
Right.
And the city clerk would still not be in here.
And so is, and the city clerk then is not covered by any code of ethics?
That's correct. The, the city clerk and the city treasurer are not covered by any, as they're independent elected officials unto themselves, they're not accountable to anyone but the voters.
Okay. It, well, it, in my mind, it brings up the question if, if one elected official doesn't need to be accountable to anybody but the voters, then why do the rest of us have to be accountable to anybody but the voters?
Well, I don't think you have to be accountable.
Because we decided.
It was, yeah.
All right.
It was your decision, yeah.
Okay, fine. And I guess that would answer the question for the other person who's sitting in the back, our city treasurer. I guess we'd have the same logic there. They're elected and they're accountable to the people. Okay. You're, you're off the hook, Mike. The next question I had was, I'm trying to understand on page three, under paragraph F, it talks about contracts with the city. And it says, it starts off saying, "Executive managers cannot be involved with any contract or sale in which they have a financial interest." Let's see, I'm trying to skip down here. This means that an executive manager shall not exercise any discretionary powers for nor make any recommendations on behalf of or to the city, I'm sorry, this is lengthy, but, or any city department with respect to any contract or sale involving the city if that executive manager is directly or indirectly financially interested in the contract or sale. And then we get down to the bottom of the page and it talks about sort of exemptions, I guess, that there might be a case where a, let me see, where it's found necessary to recommend approval of a city contract by a contractor. And that would go through the city manager or the city council and so forth. Do you see what I'm, I'm driving at with that? I don't want to have to read the whole thing, but.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're getting at. I mean, basically what it's saying is that in instances where a contract, an independent contractor serving in an executive management capacity is making a recommendation potentially to the city manager, but ultimately to the city council for your approval of a contract or a program or a project that may ultimately cause another project for them to bid on for additional work or may cause them to want to, the city to want to amend their contract for additional services, that we're asking that they, and that is perfectly legal for them to do under, under the existing law. We're simply asking them to point that out in their recommendation at the time, to the extent that, that they're able to see that far into the future. So in a reasonable, reasonable manner.
Okay, so if we have that caveat, then do we need to bring the FPPC into it? Can't we have our own code of ethics for, for staff? As long as we're not taking away from what the FPPC requires, we can certainly go above what the FPPC requires. So we can simply say, if you're going to make a recommendation to the council or to staff on something that's going to be an addendum or add to on your contract, it's fine to go ahead and make that recommendation, but simply disclose that, look, when I make this recommendation, there's a possibility it might affect my contract. I might, you know, end up with an add to my contract. What's wrong with just saying, if you're going to go through that process, just acknowledge it and leave the FPPC out of it?
Well, I mean, that's essentially what the language is meant to do. It's just going one step beyond the FPPC in terms that it's asking them to make that disclosure when they're making a recommendation.
So you're just making a statement of fact that the FPPC has.
Right.
So you're not, by, by including that sentence, I'm going to read the sentence so the public knows what we're talking about. There's a sentence in here that says, "FPPC regulations provide exceptions for contract consultants, enabling them to negotiate for contract amendments and additional services." I guess it's just a statement, then?
It is just a statement.
Just a statement. It's not saying you don't have to then disclose that that's a possibility.
Right. We're just through the chair. It's just also clarifying that state law allows the contract consultant to do this. If you're an employee, you can't be negotiating a contract for yourself. If you're an employee, that would be a government code 1090 violation. So just clarifying that the language in the code of ethics does not preclude the contract consultants from negotiating add-on provisions to their own contracts. And I would imagine when that contract is brought before the council, it would become obvious that they're disclosing that fact to the council in the form of that recommendation on any.
Right. So we have a sentence in here and I'm going to read this too for the sake of people watching or out here, that it does state, "If you're going to bring something to the council for approval or making a recommendation that could affect your contract, you must disclose the possibility in writing to the approving party at the time such recommendation is made." That's just in there. Okay, very good. On this same page, item four, "Executive managers have the same right as the public to purchase equipment that has been declared surplus if they have not been involved in the decision to declare it surplus." And when I read that, I thought, that's fine, but even when radio stations do contests, they say, if you're an employee of this radio station, whether you sweep the floors or you're the, you know, president, you can't participate in the contest. It's a little different, but it's a little similar, too. So I'm just wondering, maybe we should just say, if you're a city employee, there's surplus property, don't bother trying to buy it.
Yeah, and.
Maybe I can answer this because I've seen this happen in past years. The language is geared not so much at selling an old desk or an automobile as much as the electronics. We've had city employees interested in purchasing their tired old computers and I don't think we make much, make much more money on it, but it makes it, they then work at home on a volunteer basis. We're talking managers, of course. And because they have the familiarity with the machine and the compatible software, et cetera, they're able to work on their own time. And that's what we're sort of aiming at.
Okay. Well, if no one else has an issue with it, we'll move on. Let's see. The last question I have, or no, I'm sorry, I've got two more items. On page, are there two, page fours? No, no. Page four, G1. I'm not certain why that's necessary, that the, what it says is, "With the approval of the city manager, executive managers may be employed or conduct business outside city employment consistent with the limitations above and consistent with the city's incompatible activity policy." I'm not sure why that's even necessary. It seems they're pretty hemmed in by what's above.
Yeah, I, I think it's just making a statement and it's also wanting to point out that we do have another policy that, that really governs that area.
Okay.
But that in terms of executive management staff, it would really be up to them to work out with the city manager.
Okay. All right, fine. Now I am at my last question. That is, I compared this document with the one that's going to be before us. When did you say that was again?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, yeah. And there were a few things that I didn't see in this document that I saw in the one that's going to apply to council and, and appointed officials. Enforcement is one. Relations with council members, there's something in here about our relations with staff, but there's nothing in this document about their relations with us. There's not anything in here about the representation of, you know, like when Brian Moore, for instance, I'll try to see him here, I'll just use him as an example. Representation to the general public, taking officials, official positions of the city, other city staff. I guess some of that's covered, other city staff is covered in employment codes and things like that. So that, we can scratch that. And the last one is with the media. And again, these are all things that are pretty clearly spelled out in here for us as a council. I'm just probing if it needs to be in for.
Right. And, and I understand that I obviously had made the same comparison as I was going through. It just didn't seem like those kinds of things were showing up in employee codes. And the more I thought about them, they just didn't seem to make that much sense for, to be included in a employee code of ethics as your, what, what would ultimately happen in certain situations that you're describing is you, there would be a case of discipline. And they would be, be covered into the, the rules and regulations or the contract provisions for disciplining an employee who's, who's done something, either in the case of a department head that the city manager is going to take offense to in those areas, or if it's the city manager, city attorney that the council has a problem with.
So what this document then, what this comes down to is this document is just further clarification and a tool for staff to be able to read it, look at it and say, okay, I, I can live by this.
Correct.
And move on. Okay. Very good. Well, that answers my questions, I think. I thank the rest of the council for their forbearance.
Before we go on, just a clarification on, what was it? Section E, number four? I don't know where we left that. Were we leaving it in?
Section E, I'm sorry?
E, E four, the.
Oh, yeah. I asked the question, no one else seemed to have a concern about it. It can stay as it is.
So it stays.
Yeah. We're fine. With that, I would look for a motion to approve.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would move that the city council adopt the San Carlos Management Code of Ethics for the San Carlos Executive Management Staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember David?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grochow?
Yes. Okay, moving on to, I believe the last item is item eight C and this is by the city manager, authorization to reorganize and consolidate city departments. Mr. Garvey?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council. In the eighteen years I've served with the city, we've seen a number of changes. And rather than going through all of those, one thing that I've, I've done is analyzing this position preparatory to handing it over to a person to be selected by council later. And I've come to the conclusion that certain changes need to be made in order to fine-tune the organization and make it more manageable for the new manager. What I'm focused on is the idea that currently I have 12 people reporting directly to me. I think that's too much. It works because I know these people so well, I've appointed them, I've been at this now for eighteen years. A new manager coming in will find that, I believe will find that to be a cumbersome supervisory responsibility. I also note that the needs of the city have changed some for an organization that is geared to projects such as San Carlos was for over fifteen years. It makes sense to have direct reports and minimal line staff, excuse me, minimum staff support. That's not the mission of the city anymore, I don't think, or the city's greatest need. And I think it's time to convert back to a more traditional structure. And so I'm making the suggestion that the, the departments of the city be grouped into four administrative groupings and that the number of people reporting directly to the city council be, to the city manager be reduced. I believe that'll make the job more attractive and more manageable for the new manager when the new manager arrives. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have. What I'm, what I am talking about tonight, though, is asking you for your conceptual comments about it. We have not done the detail work. I don't have classification descriptions or budgets, so I can't tell you the detailed impacts of this concept. I felt that before we were to spend the time and effort and expense of doing all of that, I'd rather discuss the concept with the council. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Mike, do you see this tying in with any potential consolidations and staff reductions in an effort to save money in our budgetary trying times here?
That's a good question. Thank you. I don't see this as helping with budget savings. I think there'll be a cost increase through this. I think it'll be very modest, but I believe there may be a cost increase. No positions are eliminated through this effort and no new ones are created either. I will be back over the course of the next two months or so, three months, with several other smaller reorganizations that will be designed to cut costs and eliminate positions or combine positions. But as for this one, I don't see this, this is not focused on the budget, this is focused on better operation.
Mike, why are we doing this? Why now? And my view, I mean, I'll read the sentence, "The 12 staff members have done an excellent job of managing their respective areas." So why don't we just, we got, you have two more or three more months, the new person's going to come in. If I'm the new person, I come in, I don't like this organization and now we've got yet a second reorganization by the new person. So why not just let it be and let that person decide his or her, you know, it says accelerate his or her involvement in the critical city manager's responsibility. I think they have to find that out based upon what we have. So why are we doing this? And why do it?
The reason I'm asking for the council to give a conceptual approval is that I think that's a message that, that we should be able to give to prospective candidates, that this is the kind of structure we would look at. As to the details, I, there's advantages and disadvantages to doing it before they get here or after they get here. And either of those timetables would be fine either way. Certainly, no matter how general I tried to do this, to appeal to as many prospective candidates as possible, it's quite possible that a new manager would want to make some changes. I'd say, first, I recommend the council authorize this in concept. And secondly, either timing works well. I think it's important to tell the prospective candidates, though, that the council supports this notion of a more traditional structure and ease on the workload.
You see, the problem I'm having with it, in my view, is I don't, one, I don't think it's our role to do this. And number two, I mean, if you want to organize or reorganize, I mean, that's really not our role. But I just don't see it, doing it now and our authorization of it gives credence that this is the way we want it run. And I just, personally, I just don't see why we should be doing this now and let it, let the person who comes in, maybe, maybe they like the structure you have now. And I just see, there's enough staff consternation going on now with your leaving and some other changes that, you know, I don't think we need to have this changed now and then two months later, the new person comes in and they want to redo it. I just think the timing is wrong. I mean, it's sort of like this, the discussion we had with respect to the, the strategic plan, you know, it just, so our authorizing it, in my view, gives us a wrong message. I mean, I'd rather stay out of it and let that person decide on their own. And that's no, you know, there's no deference to you, but I'd just say the, you know, the outgoing captain of the ship, you know, should not really set the, you know, here's the way it was and let, now I want to redo it for the new person that's coming on board. That's, to me, is the role of that new person. So I, I mean, I don't think we should be authorizing this and timing's got nothing to do with it.
Thank you.
How traditional are we in terms of our current management versus what, I don't want to say most, because they're all probably a little different, but compared to what most cities actually do and is what you're proposing, a lot more traditional or more widely accepted? Or how does that fit in, in the norm?
I think anytime you have a manager who's been on the job for a long period of time, the organization will take on their working style. And in the memo, I tried to identify four major responsibilities, the way the manager's position is established right now. Three of those are areas where I've been able to cut back on time commitment because I've been here so long and I know so many people. A new manager will have to approach all four with the full heavy load. They have to go out and meet people in the community. Well, you'll have an in-house candidate, of course, who could cut that short if that's the one that you select. But the idea is that they're going to have to establish new relationships in the community. I've done that. I can do that and I don't spend as much time. And support for the council and support for the inter-jurisdictional and regional efforts that are becoming increasingly important to us, those are things that a new manager will have to work on. They can't cut back on those things. That leaves the fourth area, which is having 12. That leaves the fourth area, which is having 12 direct reports, 12 people that you're evaluating, meeting with regularly, et cetera, is an area where I think it can be cut back. The workload is pretty heavy. I've been keeping track now for almost three months, and it's about 55 hours a week. I had a feeling it was like that before, but I never actually put pen to paper and kept track of it. I don't think that is going to be appealing to an awful lot of candidates, and therefore I think we need to retool in that direction. This change, this more hierarchical change, would be far more traditional and would match with most cities have done some years ago.
Doug?
I appreciate what Mike is saying, in a sense, I agree. However, if I were to take this job and suddenly have 12 people come to me for leadership, I'd begin to wonder what was, you know, what was going on. I think it would be a mighty load. Having four strong department heads that I could relate to as a new manager, I think would be a better process. And I don't think it would take me or any other manager, new city manager, long to rearrange things if they didn't like what they had. So I think there's a sense of coming into an organization fresh and picking up with key leadership, rather than having the whole dump in your, in your lap at one time. So I kind of sympathize with the, with the process. I kind of wish it would have been done a year ago, but we've got a few months, and perhaps it's still a timely process. I did have one question, though, Mike, in terms of the assistant manager. Is it the intent to have the assistant manager positioned now as one of these department leads, or did you just not put him on the box?
The assistant manager would be in the box labeled City Manager's Office.
So it'd be, it'd be in your box, in effect, or in the city manager's box?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is it, is it Tom?
Yes, thank you.
I had a couple of questions. It looks to me like this possibly creates four new head positions without reducing the nine that already exist. Is that right?
All of these positions are either redefined existing positions or slightly upgraded new positions. There are no new positions created. There are, there are a handful of upgrades.
Is there the potential, though, that down the road, you could have four entirely new heads, and then all these second lieutenants and so forth underneath?
I think a more important determinant of that possibility would be workload and what the state does to the city budget and those kinds of questions.
Okay. Does a model like this prevent, for instance, I'm going to take something I know, community development. Currently, Jack is a department head, and so when he's got an issue with something, he goes directly to you as a city manager. Putting up a model like this, does that require he at least first try to go through the community development director? And if he doesn't get satisfaction there, then he goes to you, or what's that do?
Yes. My suggestion would be that all current department heads maintain that status in terms of our management unit and who's attending the bi-weekly meetings and that sort of thing. But they all would work for one of those four agency heads.
So the answer to my question is yes?
Yes, he would go to the community development director.
Okay, that answers all my questions. And then my, my only comment, I'm leaning towards Councilman King's feelings on this, that I relate a lot of this stuff to my work. And what I see in my work is sometimes you'll do a remodel design, say, on some rooms in a house, and then they put it on the market and someone else buys it, and they, I saw this happen behind me, that house above us, complete remodel, granite countertops in the kitchen, just beautiful. That guy and his wife buys it, all that stuff comes out. I couldn't believe it. I'm watching granite walk out the door and marble come in, you know? What's the problem here? But it's because people have that inclination to, you know, make the nest their own nest. And, and I could very much see that happening here. I would say, my inclination is, you've done enough in presenting this to show to a potential candidate that this idea is there, we're certainly open to looking at it, we're not, you know, rejecting it out, out of hand. You know, we're not, we, I don't think we have any problem with reorganization of the city, and I agree with Mike, it's really not our, it's not our purview. You know, city manager manages the city, we do politics and policy. You told me that when I first got on the call.
Policy, not politics, yes.
Yeah, well, we do politics, too, but we do policy.
So being asked to authorize it.
I know. And I, in terms of if it's spending more time on it and money is time, then my inclination is, this is sufficient. This is a sufficient plan to show to a candidate that, you know, we, we've got these ideas, we're open to it, you don't have to accept what you're coming into just because it's the way we did it for 17 years. That's, that's my feeling.
Yeah, I can go, can go either way, because I can see arguments on both sides of the whole thing. It seems to me that if we're erring on the side of trying to give a new city manager the most flexibility, because that new city manager is going to want to do things his or her own way. And that's fine, because that's the trust we put in a city manager to administer the city as that person generally deems fit. I think, Matt, that you, when you said that this is a good suggestion, let's toss it out there, and whoever that final candidate is, whoever is the new city manager, let that person kind of say, yeah, that maybe that is good, and then proceed to implement it. But if they really would like to have the one-on-one with all the other departments and let themselves be time-challenged a little bit more, then maybe we should let them do that, too. So that's probably a reasonable suggestion.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mike, I have no objection if you want to reorganize. That's your call. I'm just saying, one, I think the timing is, you know, may not be the best time I'm suggesting, and I don't think it's this, the rule. When we're asked to authorize it, then we're saying, this is the way we want it organized. And I'm saying, if I'm the new candidate coming in, you know, let me organize the city, maybe they may like this, or maybe they've, and I've checked with two other cities, there isn't really some, Don asked you this question, is there sort of a standard template of organization for cities?
It varies widely, but this is a pretty common structure, I think.
Well, I know it's pretty common, but each, each of them have their own little nuances that are...
That's right.
That are the quirk of, I won't say the quirk, but of the, of the, well, yeah, the vagaries of the, of the manager. That's what they've come in with. So I, I don't know. And our, my only comment here is, our authorization says this is the way, you know, and we want it done, and I'm just saying, I don't, if you want to do it, do it. But just, I don't think we should be authorizing it, that's all I'm saying.
Well, there are questions in here. I would put economic development in the community development department. Another person might prefer to put it in the manager's office. So there are some, there is some nuance to it that gave me pause. If I could take away from this meeting tonight that the council is receptive to the notion of allowing the new manager to structure the way that he or she wants, then I think that's the major decision for tonight, and I'm very comfortable with that.
So you're saying just leave it, or what do you say, Mike?
Well, just that if the council's open to a restructuring, then I think I would communicate with the recruiter to make sure that he knew that, and that candidates looking at our existing structure would be told, but the council's supportive of the change if you want to make a change. And as far as my continuing the workload I've had, that's not a concern of mine. I have this ongoing relationship with the 12 of them, and I'm willing to continue that.
I'm sorry. I would also add to that, Mike, that, as you know, from our ad hoc meeting with building, that these discussions have come up with regards to planning, community development, similar to what you have in the model here.
Right.
And there's no sense in, you know, stopping that in terms of discussion, and...
Oh, I, yes, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stop the work the council's doing. I think that's a very constructive committee, that's a good idea.
Okay.
So I'm confused, what's the proposal? What are we doing? Are we authorizing or not authorizing?
I think we're not authorizing any further action on this.
I think the consensus of the council, and I did speak with Mayor Teagueal-Doherty when she phoned to tell me she was ill, that she had a similar feeling, that she supported the notion generally at a conceptual level, and thought there was an open question as to what the timing ought to be. I'm sensing the council saying you're receptive to it, and I would, with your approval, I would talk with the recruiter and tell him that you would, you're open to a proposal from the new manager to do it their way.
That's fine. Your office.
Okay, my, my view still is, just leave it alone. You know, the recruiter, and we've each, I'm sure today, we've all been interviewed by the recruiter, haven't we not?
Two more tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Three today.
So we've already been able to express that directly, and I just say, the less we involve ourselves, the better. And so I'm, you know, I, for one, for one, council member, just saying, you know, nothing said, let the recruiter do the recruiting.
I guess what I'm trying to say, Councilmember King, is that some applicants will ask the recruiter, they'll look at the structure, they'll look at the workload, and they'll say, this is a lot, whatever they have to say, and then the recruiter, I'd like the recruiter to be able to say, yes, but the council is receptive to a reorganization if you want to do it.
So we're not, not authorizing anything?
Right.
You got your feedback.
Okay, very well.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I believe that's all the items on the agenda, and we do have item nine, which is public comment. Do we have any members from the public who would like to say anything that was not on the posted agenda? Seeing none, we are adjourned.